Okay, council roll call. Ms. Holly?
While council is present, an accorum has been declared.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Up next, we have the agenda approval.
I'll make your motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second and a further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Up next on our agenda, this is the segment to where we allow citizen comments. If there's anyone who would like to make a comment, we would ask that you come up to the podium, and we ask that you fill out one of these comment cards and turn them into the city clerk right away so that I could make sure that I invite you to come up to the podium. All right, we ask that all comments are kept below three minutes, and we ask that if you're still talking at three minutes, I will politely ask you to end your conversation and have a seat so the next person could come up. Right now, I have two comment cards. The first one is for Tori Martinez.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Tori Martinez. I'm the Regional Associate for the Colorado Trust, and we have been working in the San Luis Valley for the past three years in the communities of San Luis, Antonito, and Sawatch. And Samuel has some information to pass out to everyone. Tienes información en español si necesita, diga Samuel. So we, this year, we have moved into the community of Alamosa, and we're specifically focusing on young adults. So we've hired some community outreach assistants to help us with our initial work here in Alamosa. So I'm going to turn it over to them so they can tell you why we're here today.
Thanks, Tori. Hi, I'm Lorena, and I'm relatively new to the San Luis Valley. And within the last year that I've been here, I've immersed myself in the community and learned about the rich history and culture of the valley. I've learned about current community efforts to drive community change, and I've grown a passion for the future of Alamosa. I've been fortunate enough to sit in meetings where community members and community leaders come together and breed ingenuity and find solutions to some of Alamosa's biggest challenges. It inspires me and just fuels my passion for community change, which is why I've decided to join the Colorado Trust in their efforts in Alamosa. Our team is here today because we are preparing a survey for the community of Alamosa. We wish to explore the spiritual, emotional, and cultural aspects of the health and well-being of young adults ages 18 to 30 in Alamosa. As we prepare our survey, we would like to hear from you by March 5th on any thoughts you may have for us to consider as we develop our questions. I will now pass it over to Garrett.
Thank you, Lorena. My name's Garrett Pearson. I grew up in the San Luis Valley, and I'm part of this organization, the Colorado Trust. We are a foundation that can break boundaries and barriers to improve local communities using grant money. Our goal is to help enrich and improve communities in Colorado, and my position specifically applies to our town here, Alamosa. In order to improve our lives in Alamosa, we must first discover the issues that we face. Some problems are more apparent than others. We will be conducting interviews and surveys with various members of the community to figure out what we need to change, and I believe with the right allocation of funding, we can make some really awesome things happen. Please help us on our endeavor to seek a better outlook and positive change for our families and friends in Alamosa. If we, once our survey is complete, we would like to know if it's possible to include it in the town's water bills that are mailed out. We have funds available to offset any additional costs, and we can also provide any necessary labor. Thank you for your time today, and we look forward to hearing from you by March 5th regarding our two requests. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome, my friend. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, up next, we have Alexander Bradley.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
You'll have to excuse my voice, it was taken from me a few years ago.
That's okay.
I'm Alexander Bradley Angeseth, and I am a representative of the homeless population of Alamosa County and the small community of Devil's Playground. As a whole, I'm introducing myself and letting you know I am available at any point while my eyes are open. And we are trying to resolve the misunderstandings and everything else and trying to actually improve each and every one of our daily lives. It is misunderstood and stuff, and we are, as a whole, I am, actually working with people from La Plante and others to clean up some of those areas, working with people on daily with some of the resources provided. Now, I was just standing up for them, the others, and letting you guys know we are there, we're not a problem, we've always have been. The misunderstandings that lead to each individual's lives can be resolved with a little guidance and a little push, sometimes a kick if it needs to. If you guys have any questions, never hesitate or anything. Tap me on the shoulders and let me know. I could always use some advice myself.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Next, on the agenda, we have, before I do that, Heather, Eric, did you have any comments to follow up on?
Just in regards to some of the information from Colorado Trust, I noticed they were rushing to get through the last bit of information. I think we had some disjointed communication kind of leading up to this. I think there's a few things they have going on that are time-sensitive in relation to the survey, so getting some feedback on those questions, and then that question on the utility bill seems fairly time-sensitive. But I also think there might still be an interest to get on a future agenda, maybe to just better explain the work that you're doing and be able to get 10 minutes. And so that's not as time-sensitive. We weren't able to get them on this agenda for a few different reasons. But if we can split those two, we might still be able to accomplish that because I have a feeling you were rushing so much, and I myself had questions and want to know more, and council may as well. And so if that's something you're interested in for a future agenda, we can put you on for the 10 minutes. In regards to the questions, council, I don't know, I've got their number, so if you want to send me their questions, or if you've got their contact, if that's on what they were handing out. And then I did give them a bit of a heads up on the question for the utility bill. It's not something that requires council approval, but it is something that I'm not going to approve. We're pretty protective of what we use our utility bills, but it's, but they were still free to ask council tonight in case council felt differently. But it's something that I don't recommend because there's a lot of great groups, and sometimes they do surveys as well, and we don't use them that way. But clearly, council can give a different direction.
Thank you, thank you very much, Heather. Okay, now we move on to ceremonial items. I believe Holly? Thank you.
Okay. All right, good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, it's my honor again to be able to be up here to present the designation of Certified Municipal Clerk, this time to Deputy Clerk Susanna Gaiagos, standing next to me. The designation of CMC is given through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks Association, and is only granted to those municipal clerks who complete demanding education requirements and who have a record of significant contributions to their local government, to their community, and state. IIMC was founded in 1947 and has 14,000 members throughout the United States, Canada, and 15 other countries. The CMC program has been assisting clerks to excel since 1970 and is designed to enhance the job performance of the clerk in small and large municipalities. To earn this designation, a municipal clerk must attend extensive education programs while also requiring pertinent experience in a municipality. Because of the extensive requirements to earn this designation, it is only given after an individual has been an active member of IIMC for two years and after obtaining 60 points in the education category and 50 points in the experience category. Because of these requirements, a municipal clerk can only obtain this designation in the least amount of three years. Susanna began working for the city of Alamosa in May of 2015, and she has worked towards earning this designation by attending various trainings and obtaining experience through her position here at the city and also gaining a lot of experience through her previous employment. In order for her to earn the education points, it was required of her to attend education trainings, including a three-year institute program offered through the Colorado Association of Municipal Clerks with classes approved by IIMC. The institute program offers over, offers 120 hours of coursework in public administration, managerial skills, interpersonal skills, and technically-related subjects over the course of three annual one-week sessions. So they start Sunday, they don't come back till Friday. So it's a very exhausting week for them, and luckily, we were, I was able to send LaShaw and Susanna both at the same time, so they got to experience it together. And since 2015, Susanna has also earned the points necessary to earn the CMC designation by attending annual CMCA conferences, the CML conference, and numerous professional development courses. She's done all this while also learning the requirements of her job duties for municipal court, which do not count towards the CMC designation. And municipal court is, of course, is a main priority for her position. So tonight, it is my privilege and honor to let you know, you know, that having Susanna as part of my team here at the city has been great. We love having her. She's a loyal and dedicated employee, always willing to learn and adapting to changes with grace. So it's been wonderful to have her on the team and have the broad knowledge and experience that we do in our department, and she always makes us laugh and have fun. So without further ado, if you would please help me in extending a warm congratulations to Susanna Gaiagos for earning this great achievement. And at this time, I would like to present the plaque that IIMC provides to clerks who earn this designation. And I'd also like to ask her daughter to please come up here to place her lapel pin on her.
I'd like to say a few words.
Sure.
Esteemed Mayor Coleman, members of city council, and city clerk Holly Martinez, I am humbled to receive the CMC designation. Keeping pace with the growing demands of this profession required many hours of training and hard work. My commitment to professional excellence and serving the citizens of our community has helped me achieve this milestone. Getting to this point would not have been possible without the support from Holly, city council, my coworker LaShaw Montano, and especially my family. I remain dedicated to growing professionally and look forward to achieving a Master Municipal Clerk designation. Thank you for your continued support.
Great job, Susanna. We wish you much success and keep up the great work. I'm really happy and proud for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you for the family for showing your support tonight and giving her the support that she needed throughout those challenging times of studying. Thank you all.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to say a couple of words.
Sure, please.
The office, the city clerk's office, the way Holly's operated, it's great that everybody gets an opportunity to go and train and move up, you know? There's funding always available for each department to get better and better. And one important thing that I think that Susanna brings to the office is there's a lot of times that Hispanics come and aren't able to really talk in English, and we have somebody there que pueda hablar y explicarles cómo está, qué necesita. So that's very important, and since now, now that we've got almost over 50% Hispanics in, here in the valley, I think that's very important. So I want to thank you for continuing, continuing education and keep going. So thank you.
Good job. Thank you, Council Gregor. Good job. Any other comments? Okay? All right, well, thank you all so very much, and we wish you the best. All righty, on, up next on the agenda, we have on the regular business, a presentation from CML. Mr. Boomer, come on up, sir.
We're about to set calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on one second. I'm, I'm, I'm moving a little. All right.
He's following along.
There you go. You paying attention, I was just testing you. All right, here we go. Consent calendar A.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay? If not, start voting. All right, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, so now I'm back on track. Presentation from an outside agency, the Colorado Municipal League.
I'm going to use the tall one. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Council members, it's my pleasure to be here, and I know you tried to get me in trouble just then by jumping the agenda.
We were just excited you were here.
I know, I'm excited too. This is, so I know all of you, it was my pleasure to be here last summer to celebrate, you may call her council member, I call her Madam President. Liz Henley, Hensley being selected as president, having our board retreat here. What a great time, and it was great to interact with, with all of you and the staff then. At that point in time, I'd been on the job as executive director for three months. It's a few more months under my belt now, but all I know is that if I wasn't here tonight, after having coordinated or communicated with some of my colleagues, I'd still be in the state capitol. I am the luckiest guy in the world. So for those of you who I don't know as well, even though we've all met, I've been with CML since 1999 and spent all of that time, except for the first few months when they weren't sure what to do with me, as one of the lobbyists in the last seven years, or 10 years at that time, leading the advocacy team in the State House. And that was my life, at least from January to May every year. But the best part of the job was always after the session, getting out, doing the outreach meetings, our annual conference, our fall meetings, because the bread and butter of the Colorado Municipal League isn't the lobbyist, it certainly isn't the executive director, it's our members. 270 members strong around the state, and that is almost every municipality in the entire state. There's a couple little tiny ones that, that haven't seen the light yet, and I'm working on that. But the municipal league exists because of our members and for our members. And so this is the stuff that I like to do, is to come out and see cool things like, you know, staff excelling and succeeding, and the great support that, that you as a council have for the staff, and the, and the cool things that are going on here in the valley and in Alamosa specifically. So I was in Montevista last night at a study session, working with their council on some, on some issues they asked me to come down and talk about. And then I spent the better part of today going around the southern part of the valley that I haven't been to in a while, Lahara and Antonito, and I, well, I tried to stop into Romeo, but they're closed on Wednesdays, San Luis. But, you know, that's, that's what this job is, and what you have as a leader in President Hensley, Madam President, and the other 20 members of the board is a recognition and support for the staff to implement what our goal is, that is to empower our members to do what you want to do and do it better, through advocacy, obviously, to try to keep bad things from happening at the State House and encourage good things. But really, more importantly, and more personally, more directly, the information and training stuff, the outreach, our annual conference that we do every year, and you and every other municipality that is a member, I don't care if it's Denver, which is our largest, or Lakeside, which is ironically in the metro area, which is our smallest, every one of our members is important to us because it takes all of municipalities working together towards common goals to have strong municipal governance around the state and make sure that we are advancing municipal interest. So my tour continues. I started right after the legislative session ended last year. I had to finish my old job before I could really start the new one, and this was one of my first stops on what ended up being three weeks around the state, about 3,000 miles, and seeing a few hundred municipal officials around the state. And it was a great way to start everything off. The league is focused on, laser-focused on good governance right now. If you, if you haven't registered for the conference yet, when you do, and even if you want to go in and look, we have a good governance award. And I'm going to let Madam President promote that, I think she already has, and, and we'll do some more, but it's named after my predecessor, Sam Mamet. And we're going to be honoring those that are selected with a good governance award at our, at our annual conference. It's something that's very important to me. I think there's a lot of great examples in the state of Colorado, certainly in this city, but in municipalities around the state, and we have a lot to learn from each, from each other. The, perhaps the most important part of the job for me is also hearing what you need and expect from CML. And trust me, if I know one thing, it, and it doesn't matter if it's staff or elected officials, there aren't a whole lot of shrinking violins out there. People are pretty, pretty open about with, with what they want to see from, from the league. We have our annual conference coming up in Westminster this year. It's the first time we've been in the metro area in 10 years. We've been in Vale and Breckenridge, alternating back and forth. I am personally excited about it because I live right behind the hotel, so it had nothing to do with the selection. It had nothing to do with the selection, but it's, it's literally quarter mile away. It's, you know, for those who like to do the fun run and walk, it will be at a lower altitude and on flat ground, and, and all in one, all in one building. We have a fantastic lineup. I've got an excellent staff who has put together a conference that'll look a little different this year. You know, the same places in the last 10 years, kind of the same format. You're going to see some tweaks this year that I think you'll like. For example, since I'm talking to elected officials, if you're there and you stick around for the elected officials' lunch on Friday, not going to be lunch anymore, we're going to make sure no one leaves, we're going to have you for breakfast. And that way, you'd be free to do something around Westminster, come home, whatever. So little changes like that. We are also going to make a higher profile, or higher, larger effort at creating a higher profile for board candidates. That has been something that came out of the board retreat, actually, is that, you know, people are putting themselves out there among their peers, which I'm told is one of the most stressful things that a council member or staff member can do, is stand before their peers and ask to get their vote. I find that ironic, considering that you ask people to vote for you in your elected offices, but, but it's stressful. And so we're going to add more stress to that by making it higher profile, but also making sure that people are aware of who's, who's investing, willing to invest that time to be on the board. And, and then it's the other stuff that we do as well. We're partnering with SIRSU this year on good governance workshops, primarily for targeting the statutory municipalities that will have their spring elections. So we'll have some locations around the state to, for about half-day workshops to pick up those folks. Anyone's welcome to participate. And then we'll have a full-day workshop at CML in May, and that will be focused on everything that you need to know about being a city council member or mayor, whatever. And, and I encourage that whether you're a wily old veteran or relatively new. We have always our series of webinars and trainings. One thing I learned loud and clear from my tour of Colorado last year is folks want to see more trainings around the state. We'll be continuing to promote that. And, and last but not least, our, our information. I hope you all get our newsletter. If you want it electronically and don't get it electronically, just let us know. You get it earlier if you get it by email. And our magazine, award-winning magazine, I'm scripted to say that, and, and then various books in publications. And, and last but not least, for, for the, for the staff, this is not for the elected officials, our listservs and, and the information that staff is able to help each other out each and every day, vitally important. And I mentioned my staff before, I'm going to end on this. I am, I've been very lucky, especially starting out, that I have not had to have any stress about having a highly functioning team. I just named on Thursday Megan Dollar, who's our lead lobbyist's legislative advocacy manager. That, my senior management team is complete. I've hired basically almost the entire staff now, but for a few, and, and I'm just, I could not be more proud of them and know how much they care about our, our members and making sure that you all have all the tools in your toolbox, and staff does as well. And I want to compliment your staff for how helpful they are to, to our team, whether it be legal questions or participating in policy discussions on the listserv or just giving us general guidance on how things impact, are impacting Alamosa. Very helpful. I know how to read a clock, I'm out of time.
Well, thank you. We're going to have a few come, maybe have a few come in, questions for you here.
Sure.
Okay. Madam President?
Well, I definitely, I don't have any questions right now because obviously, we talk quite a bit.
All the time.
And I ask a lot of questions already. But I just want to thank you for taking the time to come visit us. I will tell you this, last year, and actually all my years on CML, I have learned so much. I, it is something I'm super proud of. It's one of my favorite things that I do. And this year, being a president, and I think it's a special year because it's your first year, and I feel like that's something special. I'm actually very proud to be the president while this is your first year, and I think it's been great so far, and it's gone really, really fast.
It really has.
So thank you for everything.
Thank you. If I've heard one thing, Mayor and council members, and I'm going to make President Hensley blush a little bit, is what a great ambassador she's been for not just the city of Alamosa, but for the entire San Luis Valley. I heard it last night, I heard it today, and it's great to have that voice on, on the board, and, and very important, highly valued.
Thank you, thank you. Council Gregor, and then Council Brawls.
Kevin, thank you for coming down. I know Sam used to come down every once in a while, but now it, now it's your turn. And there's still something about you, I'm, I'm trying to figure out something different. You look different for some reason. And I don't know, I, I don't know if you, the way you cut your hair or something, I don't know. Like, a little while ago when you were standing, I, I said, who's that guy? And you came up and talked to me, I said, oh, that's Kevin.
I think I told you, I mean, I had the buzz cut for a long time, but people kept getting Sam and I confused, so I had to do something to distinguish myself.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you for coming, taking the time to come to Alamosa and the San Luis Valley. I think CML's I think CML is a great organization. Went to it for the first time last year and thoroughly enjoyed the conference and it was well-organized, and I appreciate that. So, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. And Kevin? I too would like to thank you so very much and your entire staff and your team. Whenever we go up to Denver, you make sure that we have all the information that we need, and you're very prepared, organized, and you just have a wonderful group up there. So, thank you for everything. And I believe the majority of us will be going to the CML conference this summer, and we're all looking forward to it.
Thank you. And as always, at any time, if you need anything, please call me, email me, and we're here to help. Thank you.
Sure will. Thank you. Have safe travels back.
Thank you.
Okay, council. Up next, we have Business Brought Forward by City Staff, Public Works. The second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 4-2020. Is that you, Eric?
It is, thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading of this ordinance that we went through a couple times before council, both in your work session and then discussed somewhat at first reading. And as you will note from the communication in Novus, there is a change now between first and second reading to the ordinance to make clear that the ability to recoup infrastructure costs applies to sidewalk, curb, and gutter as well as to street. And it does that by redefining street for the purposes of the ordinance. So, that is the change between first and second reading. As we discussed on first reading, what this ordinance really does is four things. A developer, after his completion of infrastructure, his or her completion of infrastructure, can choose to file an application to be reimbursed. They don't have to, but they can choose to take advantage of this and do so. Public Works then reviews that application and prepares a recommendation based, including a recommendation concerning a formula that the developer will propose in the application for calculating the recoupment, the reimbursement. And then I think most importantly, a hearing in front of council with notice and an opportunity to be heard for every property that is proposed to be in what's called the zone of benefit. In other words, every property that's benefited by the improvements gets to come before council to express any concerns that they may have about that. And then council adopts a resolution or chooses not to adopt a resolution to impose that zone of benefit. There were a number of inflection points that the Novus pointed out that where you could tweak things, you can do more than those. I think the main concerns council had from the work session, and it wasn't really discussed much in first reading, is is the 30-year period an appropriate period? That's what's in the draft ordinance right now. And then secondly, is the 2% per year after the first five years where there is no interest? So, flat for the first five years and then increasing at 2% per year thereafter? The idea being to try to encourage development to happen sooner rather than later. So, that's where it sits in front of you now and for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much, Eric. At this time, we will open up a public hearing for ordinance number 4-2020. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, please feel free to come to the podium at this time. Okay, seeing that we have no one in the audience who's coming up, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the changes that were made. I feel like there's been feedback. So if there's no other discussion, I move that we approve, I rolled my thing, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number 4-2020.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Thank you, council. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have the first reading of ordinance number 5-2020. Are you, Mr. Deacon?
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor?
Ordinance 5-2020 seeks to clarify and amend the Uniform Development Code, otherwise known as Chapter 21 of the Alamosa Code of Ordinances. A lot of these changes come about after we've been working with the code for two years, trying to clarify expectations. Certain citizens have questions and there's kind of ambiguous answers. Other changes are desired to be enacted to reflect the downtown design plan. So we're opening up certain uses in the downtown business district, mostly at the recommendation of the downtown design plan. The major changes include amended or new definitions, changes to uses, changes to the sign code, which include the establishment of an exceptional design program, adding standards for abandonment and obsolescence of signs, and as mentioned before, downtown Staff recommends that you adopt on the first reading and submit to public reading on the second ordinance for March 4th. And different things that city council might be able to change or reflect upon are any of the definitions, looking at the medical clinic, for example, increasing that from 750 to 1,000 square feet, change some of the standards for the exceptional design program. There's other points as well.
Thank you.
So, was that your first presentation?
Yeah.
To city council? So, phew.
Wow. You did good, did good. Wow. Good job. Okay, council? Councilor Brawls? Go ahead.
Yeah, what did we agree about vacated signs?
Vacated signs, can you be?
Since you brought that up, I've been seeing them going down the street in Alamosa.
Sure. So...
Like in front of the old Alamosa sporting goods, there's this huge sign that's not been used.
So, yeah, so currently, we got to determine first if it's a conforming or a non-conforming sign. So that just means if it adheres to our standards or doesn't adhere to our standards. If it does, after six months, it becomes obsolete, and after 12 months, it becomes abandoned. And both of those have different sort of regulatory procedures to try to mitigate them. Really, in essence, we'll make just a contact, say, "Hey, we've noticed your sign has been vacant or abandoned," at which point, you know, they have different options if they're conforming or non-conforming.
Is there a point that we ask them to take it down?
Yeah, so after the sign has been considered abandoned, which is 12 months, whether it's been dilapidated or if it's vacant, or if it's an abandoned sign and doesn't have any business that has been out of business for a year, then at that point, we can have the sign removed.
And we did add the language that if they are working with staff, that we can provide an extension to that.
Yeah, because I think it's a misnomer if somebody would sell that property with the sign there, then the new owner comes in and says, "Oh, I can put a sign right there." And that may not be the case, so...
Yeah, it depends on how long it's been that way.
I think if we could be a little bit more active. Okay, sounds good.
We also talked, I think, along the point that you're making, counselor, of putting together maybe some information packets for realtors or lending institutions of, "Hey, you may not realize, we've got a sign code and you might want to check it out first," or, you know, some things like that.
And to reflect a point that Mr. Coleman brought up during the work session, we will send a staff person to try to take an inventory of these signs, so we don't just selectively choose. We'll try to get as many as we can, as best as we can, just to give them a notice, and that way we can track it better.
Okay, thank you, Web. Councilor Grego and then Councilor Carson.
For years, we, I personally felt that we've been so strict with signs. And we've, throughout my whole, my time here at council, we've always gone after people. And you go out there, there's a lot of nice signs out there today that I think back then they wouldn't be accepted, you know? So I just want to thank the city for at least working with the people out there because, you know, a sign that you're going to pay for, you want to present it, you know? You don't want to put the city towels, you would shove something down your throat, you know? So, I think the way we're going is a lot better. And I think just the idea of working with the customer out there is so important, so thank you very much for that.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Grego. Councilor Carson?
If there's no other questions, I was going to make a motion that we approve ordinance 5-2020 on first reading and set it for a public hearing on March 4th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Up next, we have Item C, Resolution Number 6-2020. Is that you too? All right?
That's me too.
Back to back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Resolution 6-2020, so with the adoption of the Uniform Development Code about two years ago, no fee schedule was officially adopted. The fee schedule that we currently use is on a typewritten piece of paper from, there's no record of it ever being adopted by resolution, so it's time to change that. And the new UDC does give provision for that. So the proposed fee schedule hopes to take into account all sorts of things. We compared multiple different jurisdictions, both locally and around the state, tried to consider how much staff time the applications cost, and also the cost it takes to file the documents, publish notifications, so on and so forth. So, really, this tries to strike a balance to mostly offset or partially offset the cost it requires to processes applications. And then, we obviously don't want to discourage applications because if the application fees too much, you know, we don't want to discourage development. So, some options, if you folks choose to recommend any sorts of alternatives, some examples might be not charging a half-rate for annexations of enclaves, not imposing a $100 penalty for not pulling a sign permit. Currently, they're proposed to be free permits, as they are still. Other options are to decrease or increase any of the fees or charge a flat rate based on time. Lots of options.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, council? Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Deacon, thank you for this. Is there anything currently in process that this would impact, or will everybody who's in process now kind of get grandfathered in and then all new stuff after the resolution? So no one would be impacted currently?
That's correct. So essentially, as part of your application process, we just charge the fee. And so, anyone that's in the pipeline currently, they've already paid their application fee.
Okay. And then with this, I'm assuming these are significantly higher than what was on the typewritten piece of paper, which makes sense. Do we need to do any education to our, like, developers who are here most often or anything like that?
Honestly, most of our application fees aren't all that much more expensive. Typically, we're talking a change from $50 to $100.
Oh, nice.
So, for example, the annexation went from $500 for a base fee to $750.
Okay.
And then $25 per acre, which is what it was before. Really, probably the biggest ones are fees for the wireless telecommunication permits. They require quite a bit of staff time, they're expedited process by FCC regulations, so those are charged at a higher rate. Those are probably the biggest ones.
Okay. That's actually really good to hear, so I appreciate that. I was assuming it would be a bigger change.
Yeah, it's pretty minimal.
So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Daniel. Councilor Grego?
I'd love you didn't hear what it says. On this telecommunications tower permit, where'd you get that figure?
So that's used on comparing different municipalities. I couldn't tell you where exactly that one came from, but it compares favorably to ones all throughout. And so, and when we're looking at that sort of tower, we're talking a big, big, big tower, not the little tiny ones.
Oh, okay.
So, they're all kind of processed differently, and a lot of these fees have a cap that the FCC imposes. So, we couldn't charge $10,000 for them.
Okay, and I was asking to charge maybe $10,000 or something like that. As much money as they make, that's why I asked the question for the thousand, you know? But I guess you're being fair.
Sure.
Thank you, Deacon.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
Mayor, I just would like to thank Deacon, Harry, and Eric. They put in a lot of hours of talking back and forth on a lot of, both of these agenda items. But then also, we weren't sure if we were going to get the previous item with us being in Grand Junction, but they rolled up their sleeves and we were able to get it to you on this agenda. So I just want to thank staff for their hard work.
Great job.
Yeah, great job, staff. Counselor Beal?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve Resolution Number 6-2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Deacon. All right. Up next, we have a public hearing and second reading for ordinance number 3-2020.
Thank you, Mayor. As we talked about at first reading at your last meeting, this ordinance really is a housekeeping ordinance to fill a gap that exists in the state code and also to provide municipal court forum, an ordinance violation forum, for marijuana violations for persons under the age of 21 that may not warrant being written up in state court. So, if we're going to write it into municipal court, we need an ordinance to deal with it. So it both fills the gap and provides another option for the officers who are dealing with these issues to write their tickets into municipal court. And then also, as a pure housekeeping matter, updates references that used to be to the old liquor code in Title 12 to Title 44, which is where they now exist after the liquor code revamp a couple of years ago.
Okay, thank you very much, Eric. Okay. At this time, I would like to open it up for a public hearing for ordinance number 3-2020. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to come and make any comments? If so, please come up to the podium. Okay, seeing that we have no one in the audience coming to the podium, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 3-2020.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting. I think we're missing one.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Up next, we have a motion authorizing the city manager to sign a contract to purchase property from College Heights Baptist Church on Victoria Street.
So, thank you, Mayor. I'm really excited to be able to have this on the agenda with you right now. And because we've got signatures on the contract, and once you make this vote, I can put our signature on the contract. So, we've talked for a while about the stormwater issues that we have in the Victoria Avenue, Thomas Avenue, and Oliver Avenue area. And it's hard when you have stormwater issues in what is mostly a built environment because it can be challenging how you can handle that water at a cost-effective manner. And so, the executive session we had held with council was we had two different scenarios that we could undertake in order to address it. One, which was the more expensive one, was to upsize the pipes and have the right kind of lift stations that could then pump it at the capacity that we would see, which was estimated at about $1.3 million. The other option, which is what we recommended and council directed us to follow through on, was at $800,000, which is if we could find property that would allow us to, for a small timeframe, store the water and then pump it using the existing pipes, that that would be a more affordable solution. There was essentially one kind of property that would be big enough and available. Oh, look at that, the city attorney had it ready to go. That would have been available for us to do this, and so that's why I'm excited. Because if this wouldn't have worked, I'm not quite sure, other than... Because if this wouldn't have worked, I'm not quite sure, other than condemnation or the other one point three option, what we would have done as a city. So, um, Victoria Street, I'm gonna minimize this a little. You have on the left here is the middle school. This is Victoria Street. This is the, um, Baptist Church here. Um, and then this is the empty lot right here that we will be purchasing. Um, so it is a hundred thousand. Additionally, um, they wanted to make sure just so kids aren't getting in there and then also just from a visibility, they want us to have a privacy fence built around it, which we feel is appropriate. Um, and they also want us to have Martin Reynolds look at making sure with it being as close to the church, which does have a basement, that there's not any potential seepage or any issues there. So we will be evaluating that and maybe having some some low, some options there to to address that, but we don't have any concerns related to that. So the contract of a hundred thousand for this property is within the range that council directed during executive session and that's what's before you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
And just just so the record is clear, the contract as attached to the novice agenda does not have an addendum that covers the matters that, uh, Heather was just talking about with respect to the fencing and the looking at the the infiltration into the basement area. So there is an addendum that speaks to those that you will be approving, um, the city manager to sign as well.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Vehil.
So this will be a retention bond?
Is it retention or detention? Detention.
Detention, okay. Um, and then, uh, when would construction start on this?
Harry, did you wanna come up just in case they have more questions? I was the one that got to go be nice and meet with the church people and help get the property. Harry knows all the technical details.
She's really putting me on the spot with with the dates. So I believe Victoria is scheduled to be rebuilt, uh, the street in twenty twenty-three. So with the purchase of this property, the design for the stormwater is basically complete. So we'll try to get the engineering put in place twenty twenty-one. The, uh, road construction started possibly in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, whatever that timeline is. And it'll go hand in hand with the rebuild of the road.
And Harry, will this fix the problem out there?
It's, yes. In short, it will. It it's, uh, the most cost-effective, uh, fix that we can come up with. Um, we think that it'll drain, all the stormwater will collect and should drain out within a half day. So the impact on the church should be minimal and, uh, it'll certainly be a huge improvement.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Gregel?
Can I just, how you define problem? So if we get a thousand-year storm or five hundred year, like, so I think is this a hundred-year flow? Like that or fifty-year, I mean, so how you define problem? I just wanna make sure we're clear with that, that we're not on the record of promising that there's never gonna be something.
This is designed for a ten-year storm event.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Gregel?
I had a question. Uh, counselor, you said, uh, there's an addendum amount of money, uh, is that for the fa- you said for the fencing and for what else or?
It's not an amount of money. It's an addendum to the contract that says, hey, not only are we going to be buying this property, but we will also put a fence around it and do a study to ensure there's not going to be infiltration into the church basement. And I don't, I don't remember what the other, I think there were three issues that we were addressing.
Cause, cause the hundred thousand and then plus the fencing and all that stuff is is coming from where? Uh, city manager or what?
It's in your C I P, bu- budget. So in your C I P, you have a an item that's for Victoria stormwater. Um, so it's within that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alrighty. Councilor Vehil?
Mayor, I move that we authorize the city manager to sign a contract to purchase property from the College Heights Baptist Church on Victoria Street in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
And I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
And I'm assuming that includes the addendum to where we've got the fence and all those items as well.
To include the addendum.
Okay. Alright. Please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Alright. We're coming close to the end of the, um, agenda here. We have, um, the selection of the art purchase. Think this is the fun part.
I know. I get to do the fun stuff. Um, so this is the third year where, um, we're getting ready to close it out, which just seems crazy. But as we've done historically and kind of what the intent of the program was, is to try to purchase at least one piece a year so we can slowly build it up. I can say, um, after last week attending the conference in, um, Grand Junction, which is where we stole the art program from, we just structured it exactly like that. There's art everywhere and it's amazing, but we had to keep in mind, they started in nineteen eighty-four. And so thirty years from now, what our downtown can look like from an art perspective could be pretty cool. So it was neat to see that and to make sure we realized, yeah, they've been doing it for a while and that's one of the reasons we stole it from them. Um, so before you, we had fifteen pieces. We were also able to keep three for extended display. So we had twenty-two pieces downtown, which is great. The, um, we're recommending that you select an art piece. The People's Choice Award was to Kasha Pal- Palowska for her piece Reflection of Inner Self Two. However, that piece would cost us seventeen thousand six hundred. It's beautiful, but, um, expensive. The Art Committee has also historically kind of taken a look and done a vote as well, um, just to offer it up for consideration. And the two pieces that received the highest vote, the first one was Sigma for, um, Pavia Justina for thirteen thousand two hundred. That's the one by the purple pig. There we go. And then the one that received, the next votes is Guidance by Deborah Zalinkok. I should have practiced this beforehand, for ten thousand three hundred and sixty, and it was a close second. We do receive a twenty percent commission, so I've already reduced those prices to the city, um, compared to what they're listed for. The other thing that we wanted to present to you, that there is a musically themed piece, the Earl and Still Guitar by Ken Gable priced at one thousand two hundred. Um, Society Hall for this year, we actually had an art committee meeting today. They're partnering with us and it's gonna be amazing. And so we're looking at having our artist reception that we normally have Friday night at Society Hall. Um, we are looking at bringing in a professional chalk artist and she would be doing, um, a class there at Society Hall, cause they will have the block blocked off. Um, and then additionally, they're gonna have their fundraiser and outdoor music and all of that on Saturday. So we're co- or co-promoting, we're working together, all of those types of things. So it's, it's really pretty exciting because it's all the creative industry and it's not just about the outdoor sculptures. It's the other artists that come. It's, it's the musical artist. It's those types of, um, artists as well. So with that in mind, um, the recommendation, if if we do do this, is it would still be a city piece so we can put it in the right of way. We don't have to worry about indemnification and things like that. And I, you know, if anything ever happens to Society Hall, we still own the piece and we could move it to another location or or something like that as well. But we figured it would be a fun pe- piece to place there for one thousand two hundred dollars.
Go ahead, Councilor Vehil.
Uh, Heather, are we, are are, so we have fifteen thousand. Can we only get one? Or can we maybe get a couple and stay under fifteen?
You can get as many as you want if you'll give me a budget amendment in the future. Yeah, you can buy any of them. And so we, that's why we ended up attaching all of them. We put the ones that either won the award or the art committee kind of recommended, but they're all in the attachment. So if you want the city attorney to scroll through any of those, um, we can do that as well. And if you, so the, it's actually to purchase, our recommendation was to purchase two. Um, the Sigma and the the still guitar thing. But if you guys wanna head in a completely different direction, that's your prerogative as well.
I like the steel guitar thing, but I don't know about the Sigma.
Yeah, I like, I like the steel guitar.
I like the feather.
The Earl and and guitar, and still guitar. It's twelve hundred dollars, right?
I I like the Sigma.
Yes, sir.
And the guitar.
We could buy the feather, the interstate now, and the steel guitar for fifteen grand.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, seriously, cause that's a pretty cool sign, the interstate now. I like the feather too, and we can get three pieces and bump our stock up. The feather go down. It's a, like a stained glass.
So I will say the only, the discussion, the discussion the Art Committee had on that one was we we have a feather, um, that we bought last year, but i- it is a bright colorful piece. So everyone liked it, but I think that was the only reason it may not have received as much votes. And I'm not, is that sign up above the interstate now? Is, what one are you, is that, that's the one you're talking about? Okay.
Okay, oh.
Which one, the gentle?
Hey, Michael, can you?
Gentle was third.
Council Brawls?
No, I was gonna say, I like the, uh, Earl and the steel guitar. I think that's one. I lost my art. I'll, I'll come back.
Okay, Councilor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I, um, I also agree with buying more than one piece. I am, I I've gotten feedback from several people that Sigma is harder for the average person. I like it. I think it freaks some people out walking down the street. Um, is the fe- is the feedback I've I've gotten. I think it's a really cool piece. And so I'm, and I'm not an artist, but I think there's some art there. So Guidance was one that I think people have liked a lot. I've also gotten similar feedback about the street signs, um, that people have struggled with that one. Those were just two that I'd gotten feedback on, um, personally. And so I really like the steel guitar one, um, and gentle and guidance, and I could go, I could go with any of them. But I just wanted to share the feedback I'd actually received from community members about those two.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Daniel. Councilor Vehil?
So kinda echo what everybody else up here says. I like also the, uh, the guitars and that. I think that'd be cool outside of Society Hall. I am a big fan of color and I like this sunflower whirlie gig and also because it's, uh, an artist from Alamosa. So get some color downtown or wherever we put it and that's what, that's what I would go with. But I would also like to maybe buy a few pieces staying under fifteen thousand.
I say the sunflower. I like that. Gentle, the sunflower and, uh, steel guitars?
Council Brawls?
Yeah, my other vote, my other vote would be the gentle. And the sunflower, yeah, sunflower.
So I think we're saying the gentle, the sunflower and the steel guitars? Is everybody good with that?
How much, how much is that?
How's the math on that, Heather?
I can do the math and we can make it work.
I think it's twelve fifty. Four plus six plus?
Twelve, twelve hundred?
How much we got left?
Twelve thousand.
Okay, you only make it four?
Let's get another one. I'm with you, Heather. Let's do it. Let's get one more, guys.
If we got room, if we got room for one more.
How much money do we have left?
Because we were in Grand Junction. It's just cool going down the street and seeing all that beautiful art. If we could do four pieces.
Three thousand.
You're at about eleven thousand six hundred.
What, what about the rocket ship?
Oh, yeah.
So can, can I ask a question real quick before we decide to spend fif- like, is there a way? So if we don't, if we spend eleven thousand for eleven thousand six, cause I've totally forgotten what you said, we could add what we have left, right, to next year's budget? Because this is one of those that flows through. And so instead of spending all fifteen thousand on four pieces this year, I would maybe encourage us to think about adding that to our coffers for next year so we're not buying just a bunch of pieces from twenty nineteen because we got excited.
I agree with that. Well, if if we do the ro- if we do the rocket ship, we still have some money left over. We have about twelve hundred, right?
Yes, you would have money.
Can I make a motion, Mayor?
You can make a motion.
So I move that we spend some money under fifteen thousand to purchase the rocket ship, the steel guitars, uh, gentle and the sunflower for our art program.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Nope. Okay, good job. Alright. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome. It's gonna be cool. Okay, everybody. Good job. Now, that brings us to, um, committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports? Councilor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I did attend, um, C M L's Policy, uh, Committee. You are welcome. Um, apparently it was one of the most controversial meetings of the Poli- Policy Committee ever. Um, there was a lots of discussion, lots of disagreement about the, um, some different legislation up at the Capitol. So I really, I I was like all excited and then Kevin told me they're not usually like that. But it was a really good meeting. We had, um, there are some things about like the Regional Transit Authority. Um, there also is all, this was not discussed by C M L, but the Long Term Competency Committee of the Behavioral Health Task Force is looking at some legislation that will impact municipal courts, I think in a very positive way, um, right now. The one thing that I got excited about hearing is there's an open meeting rule, kind of clarification, where if we're just doing logistics as elected officials, that wouldn't necessarily constitute an open meeting rule under this new proposed legislation. Um, and so you still couldn't talk about business and all of that, but you could say, yeah, we're all gonna be able to attend that meeting or we're not gonna be able to attend that meeting. Um, and then that does not constitute an open meeting with this new legislation. So I think we should look into that. The lawful, um, off-duty activities regarding, um, specifically marijuana use when people are not, um, in their job or performing their job duties, there was some pre-trial information. Um, and so I think looking at the stuff that C, uh, C M L sent down and really kind of digging in, there's also some homeless, um, conversations at the legislation with different, um, policies that are being looked at there. So I think just really reading into it and digging in for yourself. Each of the committee members are available on the state's website, so you can look to see who you would wanna outreach, or I have spoken to Heather about should the city take a stance on this or not. Um, C M L does have guidance on what they're supporting and not supporting. Uh, so it was just a really, it was a really great meeting, but I think there's a lot of legislation this term that we should be aware of that could impact municipalities.
And and with that update, I just wanna make sure everyone remembers we do have a legislative policy in regards that guides what ones we weigh in, what we don't weigh in on, how we weigh in. And then if something comes up that's not covered by that, the process we use and that the communication, um, comes from the city manager or the mayor, um, and then we copy C M L as well to make sure they're aware of it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Daniel, for going and sharing that information with us. Council Gregel and then Council Vehil?
On, uh, Tuesday morning, we had our, uh, first downtown board meeting. Boy, uh, the guys that you selected beyond that board, they're fired up. They're, there's a lot of enthusiasm. Uh, these people are rare to go. Uh, they're, it just, it was just, I, I just sat there and listened to a lot of them and then did. It's, it's a good comment. The way they all work together, I think it's gonna, they're gonna do a lot of great things. And I don't know if Heather wants to add to that, but, uh, we had a good meeting. It was supposed, it's supposed to be an hour, but we were there two hours. I mean, from eight to ten.
That was the only thing I was gonna add, is they, they weren't gonna let that meeting end. They wanted it to keep going.
Good job. Thank you for going and thank you for keeping us updated. Council Vehil then, Council Carson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Historic Preservation Meeting, some highlights is, um, they hope to use, so, uh, Google Maps is kind of changing into, uh, My Maps. They wanna put, um, a historic walking tour on My Maps, so it becomes an app and you can see it. It's more user-friendly for visitors and that, tourists and that. Um, uh, Don's gonna report on the Saving Places Conference and he's gonna encourage some of the members to attend. They're also, uh, looking at trying to get some information on the Hobby Town Building. Maybe get that on the, on the preservation list. Also, um, and the next meeting is in May, the Catholic Church through me through me has presented or is going to present to the, uh, Historic Preservation Board if there's any grant monies available, because the Catholic Church is in need of new pews, and it's on the Historic Registry already. And also it's looking for some grant money to help with, uh, some stained glass windows at the front of the church that have been there since, what, Charlie, nineteen, f- the forties, fifties? You know, so, that's what we got.
Thank you, Council Veho. Council Carson?
Oh, yeah, I just, I attended the roundtable meeting this, this month, and, um, stuff that they discussed was primarily, uh, kinda misleading information that's been given to the community in different forms, um, about water exports, and, uh, so that was primary, that was one of the primary focuses of the meeting. Um, the meetings will be moving to the Real Groundwater Conservation District starting next month. So, just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that as well.
Thank you very much, Council Carson. Okay, up next, we have, um, staff announcement?
Thank you, Mayor, we have a few, um, reminder that before your next meeting, we do have the, um, meeting with the Dinner of the Board of Education that the city clerk has coordinated at Nino's on February twenty-fourth at six P M. Um, we also wanted to, um, just as an FYI, in case you didn't see the press release, uh, Public Works is holding the neighborhood meeting tomorrow night, um, for First Street. Uh, it will be here at City Hall from five to seven. Um, and that's just to review the design, answer questions if people have any questions, that type of thing. So that is occurring tomorrow. Um, you may have noticed our bear is missing out front. We've moved it because Judith Boyd is doing a mural behind it, so we're really excited. If you look closely at the wall, you can see some of the sketching of what's gonna happen and, and those types of things. So we're just, we're really excited to get that pop of color and, um, to have someone like Judith who can do the murals like that. Um, I've been noticing a few emails the city clerk's been sending you guys on the CML Conference. That stuff actually, it really starts going fast, and lunches typically sell out. Um, so just make sure you're being responsive to her and, and letting her know what you need, um, on those forms, because, um, it, it can impact if you're able to attend some of those items or not.
And I put the registration form in your mailbox, so if you go check it, you can grab that and fill it out for me.
Thank you.
And before I turn it over to Holly and then Eric or Eric and then Holly, they can decide who goes first. Um, I wanted to just share with you that last week, it was in the front page of the paper, so that was exciting. Um, we attended the Building Better Places, and so it was a, it was a neat opportunity. I find it interesting that we sometimes don't always know what we're getting ourselves into, but it turns out really good. So, um, we took a great group up there. Um, what, we went up there, at least for my understanding, was when you look at rural development, especially in the West, and, and how can you manage that? Either because it's occurring quickly and you're a small community, or if it's not occurring like you need it to. And, and so it, the impression I had is it was gonna be very focused on kind of development and, and our role and our codes and, and those types of things. And I think with the new team that we have in, in Public Works, we felt that it was a great opportunity to make sure we're all on the same page and, and thinking about things. We've, we've done the comp plan, the downtown plan, we're getting ready to do a housing assessment this year, so it was a, a great opportunity. We talked to Eric into going with us, which was, which was good. It actually ended up being a little bit about that, um, which, which was good. But it also talked a lot about, um, regional collaboration. It talked a lot about public outreach and the value of doing it and sustaining it and, and maintaining that. Um, so that was good. Um, I'm sure Eric enjoyed all of those types of, of presentations. So about half of it was presentations, and then the other half was group work. And that's where we would take topics and really make it about our community and break it down and, and those types of things. And so one of the takeaways, um, is we do wanna set a work session, so our group can come and go over some of it, because honestly, some of the information was neat and it was exciting. Um, and I think it's worthwhile on some of the projects we're getting ready to head into. Um, I know for our housing assessment that we're getting ready to look at, and some of the questions some of you might have been getting, cause I know Dawn came and presented to her board, um, Mel Garrus with the Housing Coalition, and it kinda created some discussion out there. But we need to kinda take a look at our codes, and the society's gotten really good at building, on the left here, the single-family homes, and it's gotten really good at building high-rise apartments and all of those types of things. But codes and the market has kind of left behind what they're calling the missile, missing middle housing, which can look like cottage courts, um, it can be townhomes, the live-work, the duplexes, and it doesn't have to necessarily look what, like what some people's perceptions are. Um, and so I think these are gonna be really informative concepts for us to review, especially as we're going into this housing assessment study. Um, and here's just, just another quick example, cause their point was the missing middle doesn't always necessarily look, um, like what people think it's gonna be. And, and it can blend well into different types of residential areas. And so I think it's, it's just really important from an informative and educational perspective as we move forward on some of these topics. And so, bunch of other slides, I don't wanna ruin it, um, but it was, it was positive. And it was great to have the team, they kind of laid out who they wanted to have from a position perspective. They wanted someone for economic development, they wanted a mayor, they wanted a city manager, they wanted the planning person. And then beyond that, it was kinda specific to what we thought we'd be talking about. We felt we'd be talking about our downtown plan a lot, um, which we did some, but we actually spent more time unpacking what the housing assessment process needs to look like, which was really, really important. And for me, has helped my stress, because from a staff perspective, we've never done this. And, and we don't have the technical expertise and background on doing a housing assessment. So unpacking that and processing it, we're really excited to move forward now.
Thank you, Heather. I think that Holly or Eric wanna say something?
Um, I'll go. Uh, so at your guys' retreat, you guys discussed not attending the school board meetings regularly. Um, so I did hear back from them, and they sent me their agenda or their board meeting dates. So I didn't need to know who's gonna go to that meeting, cause you guys said you would want to go and like be on their agenda. So I need to know who's gonna go and which date you wanna go for spring. So they're all Monday nights, so we got March ninth, April sixth, April twentieth, May fourth, May eighteenth, or June fifteenth.
Okay, so I'll go, but what, what are we gonna do there?
You guys just said you wanted to be on their agenda and give an update of, for council.
Yeah.
So is it just gonna be one person going?
I can do it, I'll go with him if you, if you, yeah. Yeah, I'll go with you, cause we're both on there. What, what day is it?
And so you guys need to choose the date that you wanna go. Um, March ninth is pretty close, so I wouldn't recommend that, but April sixth, April twentieth, May fourth, May eighteenth, or June fifteenth.
I'm gonna go with, um, I'm gonna do April sixth, would that work for your schedule?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do April sixth, it's a Monday.
Okay, perfect.
The other thing that might be helpful, and, and you can decide if you wanna this or not, we will hopefully, um, by the end of March have our annual report done. So there might be just some neat facts of what we accomplished in twenty nineteen for potential speaking points.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. And what time is that meeting, Holly?
Seven.
Seven, okay, thank you.
Just a brief update, uh, you may recall Century Link was less than diligent in getting some of their stuff moved out of First Street, which caused us a problem back in twenty eighteen, uh, where we incurred fourteen thousand four hundred dollars worth of unexpected costs, uh, dealing with the fact that they didn't move their lines appropriately. And over the course of a year and a half or so, they were just unresponsive in, um, in making good on that. We eventually sued them, uh, and we've just reached a settlement, actually while we were up in Grand Junction. So we've got, we've got that squared away, and I understand from Harry that actually they've been much more responsive, um, lately. So hopefully, we won't be having those problems. Thirteen thousand five hundred.
Okay, good, good job. Thank you. Okay, do we have any other, um, staff announcements? Okay, alright, we'll bring it back to, uh, Council comments, Council Veho.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, two quick things, wanna, uh, give a good luck to all the Valley wrestlers, especially Alamosa. I think they're on their quest for their thirteenth, uh, team championship in their history, so good luck to those guys. And then I also want to, um, give a shout out and kudos to our, uh, local hospital. I know they get crushed a lot, probably out in, uh, social media and that, but just two small things, if, if you let me, uh, counsel is, my sister had a really, uh, serious deal happen, she had some clots in her leg and her chest and that, and it was really, really serious. And I'm just glad that the hospital said, uh, we can't help you here, so let's get you out. And, and just having that humility and to say, we, you know, we can't do it, to get her out and, and get her some help right away was awesome. And then my s- my daughter was in the hospital for five days, uh, with R S V, and they really just did a phenomenal job of staying on top of it and working with her and treatments and this and that, and she's home now, so. Um, I think our hospital did a darn good job. Thank you.
That's good, thank you, Council Veho, glad your daughter's doing well and your sister. Okay, uh, Council Daniel, then Council Greg.
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Uh, so just really one thing, um, I am on the Caring for Colorado Board, and they have hired a new CEO. So Linda Reiner, who was the kind of, um, second-in-command, has been, um, hired as the new Chief Executive Officer of that foundation. That transition will be happening, Chris, um, is retiring, so the current CEO is retiring in April, so that transition is happening. Um, I think as the city knows, the, uh, foundation has created kind of a new strategic plan and is moving in some different directions. Um, but they have funded a lot of things here in the Valley, a lot of things here in Alamosa. And so I just wanted to keep everyone aware of the, the transition and CEO.
Thank you, thank you, Council Daniel, Council Greg.
I had a couple, uh, I wanna thank the city first for, uh, the letter of support for funding for the amb- ambulance, ambulance district. I remember when, when it started, it was a volunteer deal, and we had a little house out here, I remember the chief, uh, the chief, I remember the little house that where they used to sleep at, and then they would, it was all volunteers. So they've come a long ways, and I think that's so important, and I appreciate the city, uh, come, putting, coming, coming up with the letter of support. Also, the, the survey, I saw the survey for the, not the hockey building, but the multipurpose building. I hope people take that survey and make some comments of how we can use that facility. So, and also the concrete replacement, is there a way that we can, how do we say, May eighth is deadline? How do we get that out so a lot of people can use that?
Well, it's, uh, was it front page, is front page today?
Was it today, I, I didn't see it.
And we've had it on social media and, and all our other stuff.
Oh, good, good, that's great, so, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. And then I, I have a comment, just, uh, basically just, um, uh, reiterating what Heather mentioned earlier. We had a great team that went to, uh, the community builders, um, we learned a lot. We came up with some different strategies so that we can move forward together as a team. I'm very proud of everyone who participated. And I wanna thank, um, uh, Harry and, 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 um, our attorney Eric for driving. Uh, Deacon and I got a chance to relax on our way up there and back, and we kept identifying signs, abandoning signs throughout our journey in different communities, but it was fun. But I'm really excited about the team, and like Heather said earlier, we're gonna give a presentation down the road and, and update with everyone, so you'll know what's going on, but that's it. Okay, thank you, everybody, well, if we don't have any other comments, this meeting is adjourned.